Do you see a little red light?
Yes, there's a red light there and that guy's flashing.
But they're both paved now.
Yeah.
Heritage looks very nice. Would you want to hold development call it very well?
Yeah.
So it's all done?
Yeah, other than the shoulder gravel that we're gonna do ourselves.
Yeah, I know. I know that.
That's wonderful.
You did a good job.
The guy in the gray was pretty meticulous.
So my mother's roof permit, Denise's driveway.
Yeah, see, she couldn't. Cause she couldn't sign because she, it was her.
Yeah, well, not gonna lie to you, the work is gonna get done as long as people pay their permits.
Yeah.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't be the first. Nor the last.
No, but I'm hoping not to be at all.
I'm just gonna put them on the side here so we know. My mother wasn't gonna, wasn't supposed to have it down until this week or the next week. And so two weeks ago, she got a call on a Wednesday, later than Wednesday. And they said, um, we have a cancellation, we can do your roof tomorrow. She's like, okay, just calm down, I'll go down the next day and get the permit. I know you won't, but she's gonna fly for it. Yeah, again. And then, whatever. Oops. I think Denise said the same thing with her, her porch. Anything new that?
And Harry walked off it.
Harry walked off it, she said, yeah?
Yeah.
Wonder what his brand new knees.
Yeah, cause she was telling me the other day.
Not good.
He was lucky he didn't.
I can't believe that they barricaded across.
I know, right, or put tape or something?
From the inside.
Anything?
The deck was there for forty years.
Yeah.
I know, but you lock it and you put a, you put something in front of it so no one goes out there.
I would've done the same thing.
Yeah, if you.
I can't blame, I would've walked right up there.
Not thinking, but if something's there, it would've clicked in the brain.
Put a chair.
Anything, yeah.
A lot of times they just put tape.
Yeah.
I would've thought, yeah.
It made it exciting.
Yeah, anyone find out how he did when he had to go in?
It wasn't good.
Have his knee checked out?
He was okay.
Was it?
Yeah.
I haven't seen anything.
He's lucky. Cause it hasn't all stabilized yet. Shifted the whole thing.
He broke him.
Yeah, right, I mean, he could've.
Lucky to break something else.
Could've run bad.
Yeah.
Goodbye.
I didn't get any calls.
Cause I had a transfer on my account, they said I can get a free grant for nine thousand dollars, cause they left a free in life, buddy. Who's my number? And I keep getting like.
Oh, I get cardholder.
Call after call after call.
I get cardholder services.
There's nothing wrong with your card, but if you'd like to continue, I get up too. It's like, well, yeah, hang up, like, bye-bye.
Or, do you know that your truck warranty has expired?
Yeah, my nine, my two twenty twelve truck, I had that ten years ago.
And I said, yes, we've already renewed the warranty on it, could you just take that name off your list? And then I get another call about twenty minutes later. Same numbers except for the last number different.
How you doing? Enjoying the bombing trip? Isn't it awful this weather?
Well, I'm not a fan of thunderstorms, so.
Oh, oh, well, you're inside now, you're good.
A little bit.
Yeah.
Neither has my dog twenty minutes before the storm even hit.
They don't hear.
Face around the house.
Check ticket or something, I don't want to do that. All right, well done, it is six thirty-ish. We will call the meeting to order, the June eighteenth select meeting to order. The first order of business is approval of the June fourth minutes. That should remain tabled, um, cause I will, yes, you and Suzanne. And so we're gonna hold off till she comes back and hope she remembers what they said. You sent us minutes.
I sent them up early.
Yeah, but it didn't make it on here, so why don't, did you have a chance?
It is June eleventh.
June eleventh.
Where?
Oh, June four.
No, I don't have it. Oh, June eleventh is next week, yeah, thank you. I really can't read, you know. Not well. Okay, I, I have not looked at them, so.
Oh, I know.
I'll take a look at them, so. What'll it table? Community input, anything, this evening so far? All right, none? Stop anybody? We will go into department heads, George, come on up. Do you have anything for us, or you just shared a report?
I just wanted to give you a heads up.
Okay, all right.
Surprise on Friday, I guess.
What's that?
It was a surprise on Friday.
Yeah, yeah, that was the last minute change of plans, they paid Friday instead of what they weren't going to.
Right.
But that was oversee and everything, I had already had plans, so. They did well, they got quite a bit done Friday, Heritage and River Road and One Color's Act, today they finished the project.
Awesome.
So we'll have to.
On River Road, that's finished, okay.
Would you want, their own development is done.
Everything is done.
So. Heritage, there was another issue on the back corner, we'll do ourself.
Okay.
As you started around the corner where we had dug out, I don't know if you're taking the right down.
I didn't go that far down, no.
Okay, well, there's a section there where water is running under the road.
Oh.
And coming out along the culvert of the house that's there, I don't know who that is.
At the very bottom where it turns around?
Right as you start the shot turn, there's one house on the left.
Oh, okay. Not, not down to the bottom where it already turns, but before that?
As you make your first turn at, heading towards, what's that, what we just got?
Yeah.
On the back.
On the back side, well, we took out two hundred feet of the rough area and regraded.
Okay.
And, and that was part of the plan to base that back in.
Right, okay.
While when they were doing that, you can actually see the sheets floating.
Yeah.
So, uh, what's happening is the water's running under the road because the dishes haven't been done in years.
Right, okay.
And what he suggested we do is take down four feet in the ditch line and run a French drain in there, like, it's a piece of perforated pipe.
Okay.
We'll run that and run it down the road in, in the culvert.
Yep.
But then have it open itself up and that'll relieve the pressure that's coming off the hill.
Okay.
So it's, what's happening, the water is, there's no water going in at the beginning of the culvert, and the water's coming out the other end of the culvert at that driveway, but it's not coming at the culvert itself, it's running along the culvert. So we'll put the French drain, it's probably gonna be three, four hundred dollars, but it's something we can do ourself, and then we'll put some, uh, ripper out, or rock in the ditch, so the water just, you know, flows where it should be going instead of under the road.
Sure.
So that's.
Very, very wet back there anyways.
Yeah, and, and it's all coming off, it's the bottom of the hill, I guess you'd call it, and everything just running that way, so.
Yeah, there's a big pond if you go further back.
The dishes haven't been cleaned, so nothing's running, so. They're gonna, we'll take care of doing that stuff. We'll hopefully get that in, we should get that in this fall, then we can, so we don't have to worry about it next year, when we decide what's gonna happen with these projects.
And they'll come back and repay then? Or is it our, is that?
It's paid.
Is, oh, so you.
We don't, we won't even have to touch what they fixed.
Oh, okay, okay.
What we're gonna do is just, we need the pressure that's under the road and just.
Okay.
I mean, after they graded and rolled the heck out of it, it's, it's pretty solid right now, but it's, if you get any moisture and stuff and it starts running under there again, it's gonna cause the same issues.
Right.
So we wanna fix that.
Take care of it now. Perfect.
Would you want, I don't foresee any other issues other than getting the shoulders done and we'll be good down there. I have, I mean, I will become to a P O B, he's act, Chris is actually gonna get us the gravel for the shoulders at pay price.
Okay, okay.
So when he gives me the price, I'll give him any amount we need, then I'll get the P O for that, and we'll just take it out of it.
Okay.
So, we'll just do that. It's been quite a difference in the price, so.
I'm sure in front of them, they get, they buy a much larger quantity than we ever would, so.
And, I mean, they, it was gonna be for the project either way, but like we said, we'll get it for the price we're gonna do it, and you said, you guys are doing the work, so it's kinda.
Oh, that's great, thank you. So let's see, there's Oak Street on here, grading dirt roads versus swimming catch spaces.
And that was, that was something that came up, Dover proposal, thought we had a grader apparently, you weren't getting that thing.
No, okay, we don't have a grader.
The only grader we have is.
The state has left one down at the fire station, so.
Yeah, that's, well, I told them, I told them to pocket there so they can, out of the way so they can.
Fair enough, yeah, no, but we don't have one, so we take that off the list.
And they, and they, you know, swap work to do.
Sure, of course, yeah, yeah, I know, it makes complete sense, but we just don't have it, so.
I do have the grader I designed, and that's what we use to do our roads, and if they have any interest in us helping them do their roads, if they have some roads that are favoring these roads, then we could probably work something out that way to save, you know.
Save, right, right, right.
Work, usually, whatever.
Right, right, right.
But that's, that's the only grader, and whether that's what they heard that we had, I, you know, I don't have a clue. But Suzanne mentioned similar.
It just opened.
I have no idea what's happening though.
Reclamation cost, potential at which one, we've already covered it, right? Or is that something different? Is this stuff that we should, we just cut it off of this?
I think this was new. Was that, was I on here?
Reclamation cost, potential at which one, I haven't seen an email on that, so.
Oh, that was, well, they had to reclaim the whole road, but that we, we worked it out in that.
So this is an old thing?
This is an old thing, it's just.
That was all part of that package.
Oh, okay.
The reclamation cost is part of that D R.
Well, let's take that, we'll take this off the list too.
That was, that price that we got from them to change the project is all inclusive.
Does R S M S stand?
I'm just gonna say that, we're starting at the bottom a bit, I'm working out, but R S M S, assessment training? Does that mean anything to you?
Road surface management.
Oh, yeah, 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 oh, the, 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 oh, your classes? Yes.
It's no, no, it's not, it's when S R P C comes with road management.
Oh, okay.
They are, they're going to tell you what they need to know for what to be repaired.
Right, okay.
Oh, assess our road.
We'll take a while then, we're not gonna, we're not.
And we need to be talking about roads soon.
Yeah.
Sligo Road is a mess. It has come to the hill to the development and.
On the far end? Not the far end, whatever.
There, there.
There, yeah. What's going on with the road?
It's, it's breaking up, it's, you know, I don't know if when they fixed it, yeah, back when they reclaimed it, it only looks like only one layer of top, but the truck traffic didn't help any.
Right.
So, but, you know. Hey, I'm gonna fix the corner where the trail has come in, broke some of the hot top, they're gonna fix that for us. And I talked to him about just running a layer of top across the top of this year, would, and he would've done that today, but with the heat and stuff, they. But they're gonna be coming back to fix that corner, so he said, if we may decide, you know, run a load, just run a load of shit over the top.
This is because the trucks were coming over to do Woods Run, and so that's why they're gonna help us with that, okay.
Well, they, he said, you know, if they come in to do it, he said, you know, just leave some cost of materials, the equipment's there, make a good money, you know, with probably a couple thousand dollars, you're gonna load it to across the top of that, so. Just to stay right, and it'll probably last, but starting to break up that, in places, you know, a lot of car holding that area.
We have the extra two thousand dollars somewhere, the.
Well, before we, before I even, before I even give you dollars, before we even give you dollars, we'll see what.
Okay.
I mean, we just may just pass the holes ourself and just go with that, but.
Okay.
He's, you know, they definitely said that, that is one of the worst roads in town, so, and unfortunately.
The landfill, I, I know about that, I'm gonna be. Working with you and some former selectmen too, I think, they may have some information on it, so.
Did you get really upset?
No.
And then, um, it'll be all right. Then the truck, a lengthy truck sale, we're worried about that part, but the hauling, are we still?
Actually, we're having a meeting tomorrow morning.
Okay.
With Triano Trucking, it's coming down, so I, I, I forget to tell Caroline, but we're gonna come over and talk with her and stuff tomorrow morning, so.
Perfect, okay. We had one other company that.
Coming earlier, but we knew what the paving this week would be.
I know you've been very busy this weekend, lots, so.
So.
All right, is there anything else that you have for us, sir?
That I can think of right now?
You've been very, very busy, well, I will tell you that, um, you've got high praise from people on Heritage Drive, you and not just my family, but other families that stopped by and said they were very, very impressed with, um, your level of professionalism, and especially considering how many extra trucks had to come up and down that road, so people were very impressed, so.
I just, it was just a case of, let's do it right, you know.
Oh, no, we, no, no argument here, but people were very impressed with the way you handled it.
And I explained that to the people, I tried to keep them abreast of what's going on the whole time and get them down in the other development also, and.
Oh, good.
I mean, been a lot of praise from everybody, you know, and so.
You should. Anything that you have to make, sir, is there anything else that you want?
I, I don't, right now, I mean, like I said, I just come in tonight to try to give you a heads up of what's happening, and.
Okay.
Yeah, right now we're good, um, and I did get your email, I just haven't answered it yet, so. I'm not even ready for that yet, so.
Well, it's, it's a little late, I'm just giving some, some advance notice.
Okay, all righty. Thank you.
Okay, goodnight.
Chief, you're up.
Hello.
Hello.
Two items to submit, all right.
We have to run out of here, I'm sure.
You're running well, given the rum blunts on here.
Yeah, watching the radar and everything.
Is it glaucoma?
Yes.
Did that tell you?
I want water, I don't care about electricity.
No.
All the gardeners want some rain, I think, so.
Yeah, we're gonna get some.
Did that turn off all the cameras when you had the power surge, or?
Oh.
I don't wanna. I don't wanna be the first cycle of the.
Mine's still blinking.
No? Okay.
All right, first, let me see. First thing I wanna submit is, I've kind of been updating you on the movement of, we took everything off of engine three, we're putting all on engine one. Finally got the invoice from the gentleman that was doing the work, I'm gonna submit the invoice now, and I'm gonna attach a note to it, because he has this one less item he has to finish.
Okay.
So I at least want to get the invoice in, so I can take care of that, and the note just says Caroline, hold until I do the job done.
Okay.
But I'm gonna send him that, say, shouldn't you finish it, we'll be paid, so. Dangle the carrot a little bit for him.
Uh, yeah.
So, um, it's a purchase order fourteen thirty, and it's to Adam Schoff, and his name of his company is S E R V, which is Emergency Lighting Service. And to the work that he's done, but I'm going for three or four months, basically, you know the system, we took everything off of three, and put it on one, and some other upgrades, and it's a total of one thousand one hundred and three fifteen cents, it'll come out of the vehicle repair line item, and we still have one four thousand dollars.
Okay, so this can't, there's no money left on the actual truck itself. Purchase, I move purchase order one four three zero for Adam, how you say that?
Schoff.
Schoff? Schoff?
Schoff.
You know how it is. All right, the lighting upgrade for E three to E one for one thousand one oh three fifteen.
Second. This is an ongoing project, this is not, nothing new to any of us, it shouldn't be new to anyone, so.
Yeah, I'm just hoping it's finally at the end of the, of the road.
Yeah, so, any other questions or comments on purchase order fourteen thirty? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right.
Suzanne out of town.
She'll be back.
I wanted to check the.
Can I have the S?
Oh, you can have it, so, just zoom down there and then.
Actually, I'll just leave them down, with that note.
Here's the note, and there's the invoice, and there's another one, yeah, and then I have one more comment, so all I can go with that pile when we get.
Okay, was there a paperclip?
Give that, give that to Denise, so she can.
Here's a clip for you, I'm gonna submit this last one and then I'm back.
Then you're gonna be busy.
Then I'm back to the fire station.
Yeah.
I have, I have, um, paperclips, okay.
Thank you, so.
Yeah.
This is, this is a different one.
Me need to spell it for you?
No, I'm done now.
Okay.
All that's going in, and I got one more which we have.
Oh, okay, all right.
And this is fourteen thirty one, it's to Whitman Public Safety, which is the fire store, and on engine two, it has a thirty gallon foam tank, has in-house foam system onboard the truck, and we had ten gallons sitting in the station, we're researching what we had to be able to combine with what we need to purchase to make sure there wasn't gonna be problems with the two. We finally came up with the proper ingredients that we want to order, so we're gonna, um, submit purchase order fourteen thirty one for five hundred and fifty dollars, which is five, five gallon pails of universal foam.
All right.
All right, I move purchase order fourteen thirty one for Whitmore Public Safety Group for five hundred and fifty dollars for five gallons, five, five gallon pails of universal foam, five each of five gallon pails, so a universal foam.
Second.
Right?
We need four for it to put in the truck, a little bit.
You have some been resolved.
We need it for that.
And this stuff has a shelf life of X amount of years, I get it, cause you ordered it.
Never goes bad.
This stuff doesn't go bad? This, okay, cause you've had to order, oh, it's not, cause it went bad, cause you used it for training maybe or something.
You used it, yeah, and you used it.
All right, well, then, uh, purchase order number fourteen thirty one is removed and seconded, all those in favor? Aye opposed? All right. Get you out of here so you can go, uh, hopefully sit around the station and not do anything, but I don't think that's gonna happen, so.
I'll give it an hour, and then we'll, and then we'll know.
Do you need?
With things going on and off, something will show up.
Something's going on.
Somewhere. That is all that I have.
All right.
Anything for me?
Did you get my email?
I did, twenty ninth, twenty seventh, it's a Wednesday night.
Mm-hmm, so just kinda refresh what we have on the C L P.
Yep, I'll go pull out all the stuff that I have, and then we only have one thing that we're thinking of adding, and that's basically it.
Cool.
And we'll be ready to go for you on that evening.
Very good.
I couldn't remember a few, I know you gotta go, so the breakfast, are they, do they stop in the summer?
The what?
The breakfast, they stop in the summer, right, and they start again in the fall.
Yeah.
Someone would ask me.
We'll start again in September, cause, you know, we, we did it in the warmer months, but we noticed a large drop off, and, I mean, nobody's gonna fill up on pancakes when it's gonna be ninety degrees.
Exactly, right.
So, and people are on vacation, and school kids are gone, so we fired it up again.
It's pouring now.
Hey, as it rains, you happy now?
Yeah, here it comes.
As long as it comes so quick, it doesn't do much, but, all right.
All right, have a good night.
Have a nice short meeting.
I hope, yes.
Or after it rains.
Okay, the police chief may be in tonight, there's no welfare tonight, that much I know.
Okay.
Um, we'll move on to town administration. The residents' tax, um, we need to mull this over some more, obviously, we need to have a decision by twenty nineteen budget prep time.
Right.
But, um, you know. Trying to, I, I need to, I didn't bring in the budget for, for this year's town budget, but. I, I, I need them to, to tell me where they're gonna make up the revenue, so.
Yeah, that was what Suzanne's issue was as well, you know, like you're taking your away, you know, you just need to find another way of bringing in revenue, yeah.
Tell me where you're gonna find, what, three or four grand, whatever it was.
But the inventory doesn't cost you any. Inventory doesn't cost you anything.
Doesn't cost us anything, except for the staff time.
And it also doesn't do anything either, so, kind of.
If it doesn't anymore, if that's true, then yeah, I don't wanna waste people's time.
Because we don't, we don't pay even for the printing of it, I guess, but the state does.
We do pay for the mail.
We must pay for the mailing, though.
We do, and the staff time to get it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, it probably just needs to table it until Suzanne comes back, but, yeah, I mean, can't keep on getting rid of revenue and.
Well, I mean, I don't, we don't, I'll, I'll reach out to them and ask them, you know, if they have ideas on how they, we don't have to wait for Suzanne to get back, Suzanne said, don't, you know, put, that's what whole, completely lost, don't, I mean, we should table for tonight, but if they have some suggestions on how we can make up that lost revenue, I'm certainly going to listen to it. Twenty eighteen revised budget? Manager, the transfer station, that was, that's not gonna happen this year probably, more than likely. Hauling, that is gonna be, so that needs to be revised, did Suzanne have a revised budget while I was gone that week? Cause I don't, clearly don't have one.
No, I don't think so.
All right, well.
I've tabled it most of the time.
I'll ask Caroline to see if it needs to remain on the, on the agenda for next week, if it doesn't, um, we will have it removed. There's no point in keeping it on, if there's no point. Post-meeting chores, management response, that is Suzanne, we will table that, she says she had a draft.
Oh, I read the draft.
Ready for comments.
Yeah, did you get it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Wanna make sure that she's, she's good to go with everything, cause it's a draft, so. Transfer station stickers from one vehicle to the next, is, is, we just have to have a, we have to have a, a draft presented, and that's all, so. So, I don't wanna move off just for a moment. When do we think would be a, a, a good time to have, to have the hearing on a proposal, cause summertime, I'm, I mean, I, I'll be blunt, I don't think a lot of people would show anyways to the public hearing.
On the stickers?
Yeah.
You have to have a public hearing?
Yeah, we'd have to, there were changes in the, the transfer station order, and there's very few ordinances that we can change, that we have license to change, absent, um, town approval, townwide approval by ballot.
You shouldn't lump it in with something in the file, because you're not gonna get anybody.
I, I don't think so either, but I, but I wanna make sure that we have it, um, well, we'll keep it on then until we don't decide, but. We want, I want a policy in place before they start selling them.
Before gen, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, I'll put, I'll have her, Caroline change the.
Can you have a public hearing before board meeting? I mean, does it have to?
Well, the board will want to discuss a, a draft and then send it to a public hearing.
Can it be like the same night as a board meeting, instead of?
Oh, yeah, it would be, oh, it would be, we, typically what we do, I'm sorry, I have to try you. Yeah, I'm sorry. Typically, we come in like at six.
Oh, okay.
And it's, really, we probably should come at six, because most of the time, they last about five minutes of that. Sometimes, though, I mean, we've had some issues that have come up that have been more contentious than others, and more people go up, but for the most part, maybe two, at least two people, sometimes three or four, but, um, not typically more than that, but. Other than that, so I'll ask Caroline just to put a note next to it, um, a public hearing for early fall, just so we don't lose sight of it, because it is important. General services agreement, didn't we, um, did we not vote on that last week? I apologize, I was a little out of it last week, so. No?
You didn't.
Is it in, is it in the folder, we should. Pre-application letter for stormwater assistance, the deadline was this fifteenth. Well, didn't make it. This is a, it's a constant reference in the recent emails, all right. So I did read it, and I was good to go, there was, the only thing that we were concerned about, we're waiting to hear back from our liability company. What section, what was it said, was section twelve, under, oh, that's what it's called, it's in there somewhere, though. Caroline said there was one question about, oh, here it is, Article fourteen indemnification and limitation of liability. Just have to make sure that it jives with our, um, our policy, um, for our liability insurance, so. Until I hear back, Caroline did not hear from her today, so much she wasn't in today, so. I'm gonna note, uh, this section. Let's just say fourteen. Comply. Liability insurance. Soon as I find out, we can act on it next week. This is the old one, keep in the folder, it says, so. Keep that one there for her, unless you have anything to add to that, we'll move on. There's a pre-application letter for stormwater assistance, is that in there somewhere? Well, I knew that last week, or we would've.
I just have the annual post-closure report here.
Yeah.
Deadline is six fifteen.
Hmm, last week. It may be that Caroline just didn't take it off of the, take it off the agenda, so.
Yeah, she said that, because unless you added things to their agenda, she'd be printing the last.
So last week, okay, so then, we won't worry about that, last week, take it off then. Dumpsters for buildings, I believe that the, um, uh, letters we're gonna go out via assessing, I haven't seen any action on that yet. I have noticed that there's at least one building for sale on South Street that would qualify, as requiring a dumpster, that doesn't have one currently. But, um, other than that, I haven't heard any act, anything on it more than that, have you, Jake? But, um, other than that, I haven't heard any act, anything on it more than that. Have you, Jay? Okay, um, I would like to keep that on, but we'll table it. Recreation, last I heard, you were moving, going into a, a work session as I was hobbling out in paintings.
Yeah.
How did that go?
Okay. Just put it out there that we had to come in level funded, um, so.
Or we have to cancel the teen.
Or we would have to cancel it. Um, they have, um, they have come in actually with two hundred twenty-seven dollars left over for the teen camp.
Okay.
So we will continue to go forward with it.
Okay.
What they are gonna do is, um, utilize, um, the buses are the most expensive part of.
Yeah.
The whole thing.
Sure.
So on the same trips that they're gonna go with Raleigh camp, they're gonna utilize the same bus.
Same bus.
So it wouldn't have to be two, they'll just make two trips.
Oh.
Bring the younger kids and leave staff, and then go and get the older kids, and they just done.
Oh, there you go, okay.
So, it's mostly the pool.
Yeah.
Um, so, they're gonna utilize the same bus, because they're renting, they're renting the bus for the whole time that they're there, so just make two runs, you know?
They don't charge for gas or anything?
I don't think so. I think that's what that two hundred and twenty-five dollars is for, the staff and the bus.
I wouldn't do that anyways.
I'm not sure. Yeah, so that, um.
We'll learn, I guess.
And they've had some additional enrollment, so that's good. Um, they've kind of revised, um, staffing a little bit based on, um, because teen was, um, I think, a little tough-heavy on the staff.
Yeah.
So they did reduce the help of the counselor or whatever.
Yeah, sure.
So they'll have a, a director only at this point.
How many kids do they have in the team?
Well, last I knew, it was ten, but I think they're close now to what, and I haven't got a final report yet. We're meeting tomorrow night.
Okay.
So we will have more information tomorrow night, but they really did buckle down and reduce some of the programming.
Okay.
A little bit to help offset the budget.
Right.
And it's, and Camp Raleigh, the numbers are, the numbers are getting very close to what they budgeted for, so they should be okay. They're, right now, they're about two thousand in the hole instead of twelve thousand. So I think they did a lot better in getting where it needed to be. And that doesn't include any grants that they've been accepted.
Oh, okay.
All the ones that, um, they're not counting the grants.
Sure.
They haven't been.
Sure.
Fully, um, been given the approval on the grants.
Yeah.
So there's a possibility that they're going, it might be a grant, maybe a little bit over, somewhere in that vicinity.
Okay.
But I think they've worked really, really hard to make sure that this happens, and they're going from ten, ten thou, plus over ten thousand in the hole down to two right now, so.
Okay, and they're still working.
And there's still some, because I've seen some emails coming across saying, can you still take res, you know, um, kids, because now kids are out of school, and parents are going, what am I gonna do?
Right.
You know, hadn't really thought about those kind of things, so they are still saying, yep, we'll take more.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so I think they're, I think they're working very hard, and I think that, I think we're probably going to let both of them go forward, but they still could modify some of the, um, trips with Raleigh, reduce it down to one a week instead of two, and do stuff in-house, and that would save them some more money if they needed to.
What are the two trips that the, um, the other kids do?
What's that?
The other kids do two trips or just one trip?
They do two. I believe they do two. They do, um, the pool, and then they do state parks.
Oh, okay.
So.
The other kids do the state parks, too?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so they, they talked about reducing it, a couple of state park trips if it, if it had to be. They don't want to, but if it had to be.
Right, okay.
So, I mean, that's something that you can make that decision during the program being in effect.
Right, 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 right.
Um, so I think they, they can get it really close, really close. Um, so I'm uncomfortable that there, it was a tough com, it was a tough meeting.
Yeah.
It was, um, it was, it was a tough meeting.
But you've got it, you handled it, so thank you.
I did, I did, and, and, you know, then, kind of, it kind of got back to, um, civil. You know, it just, it, you, they were working hard, and they didn't have to give it, and they didn't, didn't want it to come across that way, but we also had to say that we, we, we don't have the money in the budget.
Right, that's the problem.
That was the whole budget, that the whole problem was the budget part of it, so, um, but I, it got, it got a lot better at the end.
I, they, they've created a program out of nothing, really. I mean.
No, they've done an amazing job.
A bare-bones skeleton.
Yeah.
From before, so, I mean, they, the last two years, they've come a long way.
They have, you know, so their biggest expenses is their staff and, um, their transportation.
Yeah.
So, oh, one of the things that they're going to do with, um, the teen is, um, what they do at the grade school is having, um, parents be transporters as long as they have the required insurance, if they're buying the same programs at school.
Yeah.
What, how much liability and all of that. I think it's three hundred, one hundred or one hundred, three hundred or three, three, I don't know what it, whatever the school is, and having the insurance on file here, and, um, and if they can't get the, you know, if they can't afford the buses, that's what they're gonna do, so. But everyone's gonna have to know that it's by parent vehicle, not by bus, and have to accept that or not.
And have to sign off on it.
Right, right.
The parents.
But that would not be Raleigh, that would be teen.
The teen camp, yeah.
Yep, yep. So, but that's where we stand right now, and I think they've done a real good job trying to, to get where we need it to be.
Cool, all right, well, thank you for that.
Yeah.
I know it's not easy, but, uh.
Yeah.
It's certainly worthwhile and ever.
It had to be done, absolutely, so.
All right, so, class six road policy, I've been emailing back and forth with the, um, code enforcement officer, Mr. Clark. Talking about, um, uh, the class six road policy. I'm hoping to hear back from Mr. Krebs as well, see if a lot of revisions, so. Has not been forgotten. The, um, S R P, the visioning for the village. See, I've kept it on here for Suzanne. Do you wanna keep it on, or do you want to just?
I'd keep it on, because that's, that's something that she wants to pursue, so. I don't know if we have to keep the next one on.
Or the national conversation? Yeah, I don't think so. Why don't we just take it off? If she wants to bring it back, we can.
Yeah.
Oak Street boundary, um, I think you saw what I looked like last week. Uh, yesterday is the first day I've been able to stand upright, so I didn't go walking a lot this week, so I promised it was gonna happen, so. And it was nice this weekend, I could go this weekend, I can walk again, so.
We're prepared by hiring.
Fire department's here. Hello? I don't know. Hi.
Can we get the T D?
The T D? We don't have a key. We don't have a key anymore.
No.
They took our keys away when they had to.
You can't call them?
We had, yeah, you'll have, you'll have to, I'm sorry, they, we don't, I'd let you in, but we don't.
Yeah, no, yeah.
They, they, we don't have keys anymore.
Which one, T D?
He said T D, right?
Yes, T D.
We don't have keys anymore. We used to, and then when they had to put the new doors on, because it's, uh, the predation thing, they do, we're not allowed to.
Yeah.
It was always weird, I just had a key to walk in, it was so nasty, but.
Yeah.
Anyway, well, that was a little, uh, not something I was expecting to see.
No, me neither.
The door, so.
The dad's gonna check on his mother.
Yeah, right, making sure you're okay. That was a secondary task, so. All right, the cremulation I'm doing, hopefully, this weekend, if it doesn't rain. I promise I am, I am doing it. Uh, town administration, standing items, uh, board member activities. You've given us an update on, uh, on rec. Do you have another meeting?
I have rec tomorrow night, and I have, um, a police station on Wednesday night, and hopefully, C I P next Wednesday night.
Awesome.
So, getting starting, getting started, and.
Meeting this week, too. Historic committee.
Oh, we're conflicting, so we're gonna be in the planning room.
Oh, we can go in there. Wha, which one are you, C I P?
Uh, is it, which day is it, Tuesday or Wednesday?
Uh, Wednesday.
Wednesday is, uh, C I P. Well, either way, it doesn't matter.
We're pretty small, so.
We don't have that many either, so, either way, but Caroline asked if I could go in the planning room, and it's like.
You can go in there, doesn't matter. We're just gonna be going through boxes of, uh, things that we don't need. Looking through.
Okay.
Years ago, that's what we're doing.
So that's all I have going on.
So I, to think of that I have going on, besides, you know, communicating and working on, um, some planning things, uh, um, from the last meeting. Building permits. First one I have, so, I may not even order it, but, uh, twenty eighteen dash zero five three, seven ten Main Street. It's electrical, at two hundred and seventy-five dollar fee. Mr. Clark has a review. And next is twenty eighteen dash zero five eight, uh, also, uh, seven ten Main Street. It is also residential electrical work, and that one was the, the commercial part. It's also, uh, about two hundred and seventy-five dollar fee for electrical. And that's all we have for building, we have two other building permits, three other building permits, but we need one other person here, so.
Yeah, so for me?
This'll be you in for my mother, so I'm not gonna, not gonna act on that.
Do you have a dollar now, so I can?
I can, I can at least tell you that much. One of them is two, yeah, two sixty-five.
For the dug?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And the other one is seventy.
Paving?
Paving, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And we have, let's see, dear board members enclosed, please sign the twenty eighteen P A eighty form. Uh, we have provided the data electronically in Excel format to your contact, uh, contractor, successor, oh, okay. Uh, if you would like to receive the data directly as well, please go over to contact me, and I will provide this information to you. How was the telecommunications, is the index of, um, uh, from, uh, D R A of, of how many poles and, you know, yeah. Although, it's blank, it just has, who owns them? Couldn't say how many poles or anything we have, so it must be on the electronic version of it. I'm hoping it shows up, so. But at least it's been, it's been forwarded to us, so, it was due by July of. They forwarded on to, um, you want to open it?
It's just, yeah, no, that's fine.
Have it talk, to forward on it. I'll load it to your folder.
Okay, I have an invoice for thirty-five dollars for a bound, uh, boundary line dispute for the city of Dover, uh, file number one two two four zero four.
Oh, those are, those are just, that's just the bill, you don't have to.
We don't have to, you pay?
We do, but, you know, is this your?
Reports month.
Oh, that's not, that's just usually in it so we can see it. It's usually even, very.
Oh, we don't, oh, sorry.
It's just a legal bill, it's, um, thirty-five dollar legal bill that we have, so, I'm gonna say, okay, the thing. It must have got stuck in there because, um, I wasn't in this one, so.
Oh.
Yeah, Suzanne, Caroline wasn't gonna be in today, so maybe we're covering this up.
Oh, yeah, 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 that's why she's out.
Sure.
We have a revised credit card C O A. To ensure product credit card authorization, please have Suzanne, Michael, and Tweak sign. We're integrating on page one, and have Suzanne and Michael sign, which can be created on page two. Um, this is from the Citizen Government Bank. This is for the, the credit card, the purchasing credit cards, is that what this is?
Yeah, changing the names on it. They finally have gotten the.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Joey's name off, probably, and they're putting you on.
Oh, okay. So, do you want to sign them?
Yeah.
Do you want to, this is, okay.
Let's sign them, so we can, uh, we're, we're standing them back, so we can sign them.
You have to sign that one and the next one.
Oh, okay.
We have a uniform telling us that they're going to give a modest price increase on our uniforms.
Okay.
On or around June fourteen. It's not telling you how much. It's just telling you having modest increase, doesn't tell you what it is.
That's super helpful.
Yeah. Even know for Caroline to find out how much, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, make sure we have enough questions for it.
This is, this is to Suzanne, but it's, um, economic and labor market hero of New Hampshire employment security preparing to update wrongs with information. Is that what, like, all the salaries and stuff that they put in the book?
Yeah.
New Hampshire community profiles page on our website to ensure that we have the most current information. Isn't that something that Caroline can take in?
Caroline has usually, uh, sent in that, of course.
You're vital in containing this information. Please return by June fifteenth, which we missed, so, so just tell Caroline to handle, or?
Take a look out right now, see if it's accurate. Basically, wants to know about, you know, the top, the largest employer, uh, so we have, like, Janko, Janko Electronics, One More Greenhouse, Alexander's, Mick Construction, C and J. They want to know, like, when the select board office is open, if the cap law is open. When our zoning ordinance was, was first adopted. It's not gonna change. So whether or not we're planning board, we do indeed, and whether, whether or not we have a full-time police department. Doesn't look like anything on here has actually changed. Didn't get any indoor swimming pool or golf course that I'm aware of, so. Still have a bowling alley in town. And that's it. I'll sign off on it, but nothing's changed, so.
Okay.
You don't have to have to ever do it.
Okay.
How's that?
Let me see what you signed.
Yeah, I want to. Yes, it's changed with the Xfinity.
Well, they're saying that they're coming up with new simpler pricing and package options that have been made available to your residents. However.
Yes.
Starting on June sixth, they are not going to include a TV box or a remote, will no longer be included in the packages, and we will reduce the pricing of the packages accordingly.
Really?
However, you cannot have cable without a box. You, you can't have, you, they don't, it won't work.
It won't work if you just do your TV, you plug the TV one in the back, like you.
No, back then, when they got rid of, was it analog? Is that right? Analog?
So, good for them, yeah.
And so now you have to have digital, and so you have to have a box, so, they're gonna, they're gonna pay the same thing, it's just kind of misleading.
I'm shocked. They're such a forward, or?
See, today, most Comcast video packages include a rental box and remote.
I'm not a fan.
Your primary TV at home, in some instances, we've found certain customers have chosen to use their own video devices, like Outivo, instead of using Comcast equipment.
Oh.
I don't know why they do Outivo.
So I can run, can I run my, um, cable through, like, my Apple TV box?
Maybe.
Save the whatever it is, uh?
Maybe, I don't have any.
Oh, we don't have cable anymore, we have just internet, so.
Yeah.
Interesting.
It's interesting, the pricing of the package. A TV box, a remote for the primary will now be billed separately at two dollars and sixty-eight cents, combined price of the rental and the TV, Comcast TV box and remote.
So you're telling me I'm gonna save two sixty a month? Is that what it is?
Something like that.
I'm not gonna worry about it, but.
Yeah, I, I don't know, it, it's kind of confusing to me, because I know you can't do it without a box.
Right, right, right.
You can get the smaller boxes, but then you can't have, like, D V Rs and all of that.
I don't have any other stuff.
Okay, so it's just kind of N Y I, help it file, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's not we do that. Um, New England mediation services for the wall of the office at the Highway Shed, hold until mid-year budget review, that's smiling face, so.
Smiling face.
This is an estimate.
For, I'm looking for what?
Wall of Office at Highway Shed.
Oh, okay.
There must have been some problems.
There has been an ongoing problem with the interior wall, it could be an exterior wall, I don't know.
I mean, it's only thirteen eighty.
Huh?
It's only thirteen eighty, that's what it's wired for.
It's gotta be the interior wall, this, um.
Yeah, remove of, oh, something's been contaminated.
Water damage, probably got mold on it.
Oh, I remember him, didn't it happen? And then they're gonna send it.
And then they're gonna send it and spray it with some antidote.
Interesting, I don't know.
But it says hold for next budget review.
Then we'll hold it.
Okay.
Okay.
That's it.
That's it?
Yeah.
Fantastic. Any other community, any other community?
I just was, one clarification, I'm sorry, I missed the majority of the meeting. Um, is the select board in favor of holding up the head of the teen camp?
What I have seen is we no reason to not move forward, so, um, but we're meeting tomorrow night, and so I would, I mean, I, we talked about it a little bit, I, right, it's how you guys really looked at it, reduced it as much as you possibly can, you're actually coming in in a positive number, so, I, there's no reason why you can't go there.
But I just need to know, because the director would like to start making phone calls, securing locations for the teen program, like, um, reservations for their activities.
Okay, they're already part of this budget, though, right?
Yes.
Anything new, okay, so, again, we're meeting tomorrow night, so I can confirm that information tomorrow night, and what I've seen so far on Raleigh, I mean, we're still a little bit behind, but my, my understanding is at least it were people calling on a day-to-day basis. And I think that, and if you, you haven't heard anything on your grants, so, I mean, your grants exceed, even half your grants exceed what we're gonna be short. So I'm comfortable, I'm glad you got your P T O payment that helped, um, and then, now, my understanding is recreation is one big pot. I know you separate Teen from Raleigh.
Yeah.
But if they have a credit balance, that can be moved over to Raleigh's to offset that balance, correct?
Summer rec and summer rec.
Summer rec and summer rec, okay, all right, I just wanted, because I know that when you, you split the fundraiser that you had with P T O in half, so, but now you have a credit balance, but that can be applied to, okay, to insurance.
And we are also trying to do more cost-cutting for the teen camp. One of the programs offers donations, one of the activities, so I'm pursuing that to see if I can get it donated, like, packaged.
Mm-hmm.
So we might end up with more savings than that, and, um, I found some other savings in Camp Raleigh that we'll talk about tomorrow night.
Awesome, but I mean, I think the takeaway, though, is that thank you for, uh, all of you two for...
For really stepping up.
Really working hard and finding places where you could cut and make it work, so...
Yeah, so, um, I saw something from Brittany on the, well, I didn't have a moment to, uh, finish reading, but was it anything to...
Um, yeah.
They're concerned about the blessing, right?
Yes, um, and that is in limbo for both camps, and hopefully we'll cover it tomorrow night during the meeting, is that the teen camp is now joining Camp Raleigh, and Camp Raleigh is thinking about reducing the number of field trips, so if we reduce the number of field trips, it'll affect both camps.
So, Sue, you have a...
Positive.
And the...
Yeah, it'll be financially positive, but less...
Not for the program.
Less trips per program.
Yeah, okay, all right, but the one that we were joining courses with, with, um, Teen and Raleigh was Jenny Thompson School, right?
Well, when we reworked the budget...
Yeah.
We switched activity days so that now both field trip days, two state parks are Mondays, so Teen Camp would piggyback on Camp Raleigh for four of their field trips, saving us a thousand dollars.
However, now that your numbers are higher in Raleigh, you would have to do two buses.
Right.
That's the problem.
Right.
Okay.
And, but if we do two buses, we are over in Camp Raleigh by ten kids, so if, there would be room on the second bus for Teen Camp.
Yeah.
But then it was not budgeted two buses.
Right.
So it's detrimental on one side and positive on the other.
Right, right, because it's, what we had talked about with the Jenny Thompson School was that you could make two trips, take the younger kids, go back and get the older kids, or vice versa, you know, so, and have someone stay there with the ones that were there. So that is a win-win, cause it's only two miles up the road, you know?
Right.
So that shouldn't, even if you have more Raleigh kids, it's okay, cause you can do two trips, as long as you have enough staff to stay with the ones if you drop off, so, okay.
Yeah, and, so, that's something we'll examine tomorrow night at our meeting.
Okay, okay, very good.
Clearly you've done a great job trying to, you know, cut where you're putting out what, where you're, you know?
Just, uh, what time are the meetings for the CIP and the space needs?
Six thirty.
They're both here?
Okay, thank you.
Any other community comments, questions, concerns, anything? If not, we will adjourn the meeting at seven twenty-two, thank you all, have a great week. Stop raining, probably, it looks like, so...
It is now clear, that's part of my delay.
The down.
Yeah, I don't blame you.
I don't blame you, I wouldn't have walked over here, though.
Thank you for your support. I know it was a little hot at the beginning when we had our meeting.
Hopefully the rain didn't come so quickly that it, uh...
I just didn't understand.
Didn't absorb, well, yeah.
It was, but, yeah, it was, it was, it was nothing, but I don't think it was enough for runoff, so that I think it absorbed.
I hope so.
Oh, yeah, but, no, we need a lot more.
Yeah.
Need a lot, lot more. I get down an inch into my soil and it's dry.
Did you get the fire department, the police station? They came in here trying to get in there.
They wonder if I let them in, like, I don't have a key anymore, so...
It must've contacted the duty officer.
Yeah.
Okay, what, I go, yeah, I don't know, they just, we must've had a alarm go off or something, I just don't know.
The lights went off several times, come on, come on, come on up, so the lights went off several times, yeah, so, sorry, yeah, we were quick tonight, so, sorry. Sue, Sue's not here next week either, so you gotta, uh...
Take about fifteen, twenty seconds for the, the generator to kick on for a minute and then come back on.
Yeah.
And when it does assess the alarm off, no power, so don't...
So without objection, we're gonna reopen the select board meeting of, uh, June eighteenth, the police chief has come in with a few issues that we need to take care of, so, go ahead, chief.
Uh, I need a set of brakes and rotors for the Cruiser seventy-four, so I purchased one for City Dover, number one four zero five, an amount of five hundred dollars, that's the max, they tell me three hundred dollars, but I put down five just in case again, they find a sway bar or something, I'll set, uh, along with it, with the luck we had with the car lately.
Yeah, motion for purchase order one four oh five for the City Dover for the brakes and ro- rotors on Cruiser seventy-four for five hundred dollars.
Second, any discussion of purchase order fourteen oh five? How long will, do you think, do you think they'll be able to get it done tomorrow, the next day?
Okay, yeah.
Okay, all those favor of, uh, purchase order fourteen oh five, say aye. Aye opposed, all right.
Okay, next item, um, the H V A system, H V A C system is not working downstairs at all, uh, neither unit, so I called Townsend today for a service call. Uh, they came and looked at one unit, needs a new motor, and then needed, the other unit needs a freon, uh, freon charge, uh, the estimate about four hundred dollars. So Town Hall Maintenance, Townsend Energy, uh, personal, personal number one four zero six, service call and to repair H V A C system, motor, and freon, which is not the day you didn't want it.
No kidding, now, we have a different system than he does, is that, is that right? Our A C is different?
Yes, there are, there are five units altogether, two upstairs, two downstairs, and then one for the ignition.
Okay, thank you. Purchase order one four oh six, I'm moving for four hundred dollars for Townsend Energy, um, to repair the A J, um, the energy system for mo- motor and freon.
Second, any other discussion or questions? If not, we'll call it a question, all those in favor of purchase order number fourteen oh six, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, all right. Do that if we're opposed, cause I didn't got nothing. Wouldn't have urgency, wasn't it?
They made, they made a...
Oh, they did make it over here, okay, that was cool.
They, they, they checked it out, but they did not make a repair, cause that, one of the measures was, okay, just to change the motor and whatnot.
Yeah, well...
Can they do it tomorrow?
They have to order the parts, they'll let me know tomorrow, so...
I'm not gonna make you work down there on that heat, so...
So...
I'm not in charge of the A C, so...
Yeah.
Uh, that's all that I have for you folks.
That's it, huh?
All right, terrific, all right, well, thank you for, uh...
Of course.
You got my email?
I did, yes.
Okay, we are good?
Yep.
Okay.
Good luck on Wednesday. Yes, thank you.
All right, so is there any other business?
No.
Don't see anyone else coming in, so we're going to adjourn at seven twenty-seven. All right.
That box is fenced.
It's, it's what, like a minute?
Yeah, two?
Two, mm-hmm. Mine's after work, it's been losing five minutes today, so...
Some are lighting and lighting up there, right?
Not at the moment, seems to be setting up right now, so...
Sorry about that, chief, we're going quick.
Yeah, next week it better be quick.